Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. We have an interpreter, Mario Barajas, here with us today. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I want to be today's Spanish interpreter. I want to be making a brief announcement for the Spanish speakers present. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de español del día de hoy. Si acaso hay alguien que necesite el servicio de intérprete, podrán acudir hacia la parte de atrás, al miembro del personal, estará ahí, el joven Nec, para poder concederle los aparatos para la interpretación. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now I'd like to call to order the August 28th, 2019 Park Central Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board Member Conlin. Board Member DeCecio.
Here.
Board Member Garcia.
Here.
Board Member Gervais.
Here.
Board Member Guardado.
Here.
Board Member Nowakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Stark.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Waring. Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
And Board Member Conlin may be joining us telephonically. Board Member Conlin. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 1st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes, I'm on.
Welcome to our board meeting and thank you for helping us test our telephone system. Right now, we are entertaining a voice vote to approve the minutes from May 1st, 2019. All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Minutes pass unanimously. I would next entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
No, I can't hear.
Go forward without him. Madam Chairman, I'll move adoption of resolution PC.
Would you like me to call back in?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you for your service. To our visiting board members. We are adjourned. We will next call to order the formal city council meeting of August 28th. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia. Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring. Mayor Gallego.
Here.
City Clerk, can we have the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G6613 through 6616, S45922 through 45988, and resolutions 21766 through 21776.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski, have you had a chance to review the minutes from our January 23rd, 2019 meeting?
Yes, Mayor, I have, and motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Motion passes unanimously. We next move to item number two, which is the city council and mayor's board and commission nominations. I will turn to Councilwoman Guardado for motion and comments.
I would like to make a motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
So I would just like to take just a few moments to recognize a couple of the people. As a new elected city councilwoman, I am honored to serve a diverse district, and I believe that today's appointees represent the strength that the diversity brings. Jeff O'Tuoh is a committed community leader from Villa de Paz who has worked tirelessly for the quality of his neighborhood. Jeff Armour is the executive director of the Maryville Revitalization Corporation, and he works every day to further the economic, social, and physical renewal of Maryville. Denise Garcia serves as the vice president of the Cartwright School District Governing Board and is true education champion for our children. Joe Barber is a manager of donation services at Goodwill of Central in North Arizona and helps bring hope to our neediest families. Thank you to each of you of our appointees for your commitment to our neighbors. I look forward to continued leadership as you serve on our cities-village planning committees. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A great group of appointees. We have a diverse group of community leaders today who will help us plan our community, further our park system, develop international relations. Thank you all for being willing to serve. With that, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. I will now come down to swear you in, and then the council members would like to personally congratulate you. Please raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of the Maryville Village Planning Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We next move to the liquor license portion of our agenda. The city council serves as an advisory body to the state on this item. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
We do. Move to approve items three through 42, except items three and 16.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signal by aye. Any opposed by nay. Passes unanimously. Item number three is a license in Councilwoman Guardado's district. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last council meeting, I asked to have this item continued to give the applicant and the neighbors time to sit down and talk. I am very appreciative of the leadership taken by the Sevilla Neighborhood Association in coordination this meeting over the summer recess. I especially would like to thank Jamie Johnson and Lori Fitzhugh of SNA for their commitment to their neighborhood and their genuine desire to see open dialogue with the applicant. On August 17th, my office attended the meeting. With the applicant organized by the Sevilla Neighborhood Association, Mark Peterson, the franchise owner, and his team were open and transparent. They spoke of their business plan and their commitment to invest in their property. They addressed the concerns of security and safety for the neighborhood. They offered their record and their experience in providing professional service that strictly adheres to requirements of the Arizona State Liquor Laws. As I said at the last council meeting, I believe first and foremost in dialogue between neighbors and business owners, developers, and our diverse community members. I believe that many of the problems we see today could be resolved if people would sit down and talk and listen to one another. I am very happy to say today that because of the dialogue between neighbors and the applicant, the Sevilla Neighborhood Association has withdrawn their formal protest and instead issued a letter of support. This was my hope, that neighbors most impacted would be given the opportunity to express their concerns, and their voices would be listened in a real way. I am thankful to the applicant for taking the concerns of the neighbors seriously. I am thankful to the neighborhood leaders who were diligently to ensure their voices were heard. I am very happy today to vote in support of this application. I would like to make a motion to approve item three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have three cards, including a card from Jamie and Lori, who are available to speak if needed. Having made the motion, would you like to hear any of the cards?
Yeah, I mean, we would like to hear testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Councilman Guardado, and the rest of the city council. My name is Teresa Morse. I'm the applicant on this application, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today. I will not make it long. But I want to thank the Sevilla Neighborhood Association. We have quite a long history with one another. But they are, they know what to look for, and I would encourage other neighborhood communities to follow along. And if they don't know how to interface with the liquor laws, to contact the Sevilla Neighborhood Association, if that's all right with the President and Ms. Fitzhugh, because they know how to look for capability, qualifications, and reliability. This is something that is important to the owners of the establishment, as well as to the city, and we are happy that this occurred. There was a glitch in the very beginning, and that's why we didn't have contact with one another. But thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you today. So I do encourage the rest of homeowners associations to contact the Department of Liquor or someone to assist you in the knowledge of the liquor laws so that it can eradicate crime and build up your communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like a good community success story. Do we have any additional residents willing to testify?
Madam Mayor and Council, and Betty, thank you. You covered it all. We're good. Thanks.
Excellent. A great community success story, then. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations to all involved. The next item, item number 16, is in Councilwoman Pastor's district. We have five cards on this item, all marked in favor. I will turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes. I am, what I would like to know from the clerks, or the liquor clerk's office, is you received a call this morning, and could you please explain the call from Jeanne Ochina? Ochina. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. I did receive a call from a woman, Jeanne Ochina. She is the prior owner of the Series 6 application, I'm sorry, of the Series 6 license, which is personal property. And she had sold the license to the current applicant, and she had called inquiring if she was able to cancel the sale. However, that is a private legal matter between her and the current buyer, applicant, of the Series 6 license. Okay. And so that process will then have to go through a different process, because today, what we're just voting on is on the liquor license. That is correct. Okay. Just needed it on the record. I don't know if those in favor want to speak, or I can go ahead and make a motion.
Why don't you make a motion, and then we can turn to them based on the motion and see if they would still.
So my motion is for a no recommendation.
Great. Second.
We have a motion and a second. David Dow is the attorney for the applicant, who I just saw a second ago. Hearing the motion, would you like to testify?
You know, of course, we'd like to get an approval and a recommend, but we also understand the logistics of a club like this, and people often do a neutral recommend, which is apparently before, and we would be satisfied with the neutral recommend, and we would go to the liquor board and make our plea there.
Thank you. We have Christian Nava Cruz. And if anyone does not wish to testify, we can record your name for the record.
Madam Mayor, city councilwoman Pastor, city council members, thank you for hearing my liquor license application today. I'm fine with the neutral vote. Thank you very much. And we'll find out what that is about the lady's call. Thank you.
Sylvia Salas is in favor. Mark you in favor. Gloria Sesma is in favor. And I think, apologize for my pronunciation, Lionel Morales is in favor. Wonderful. With that, does anyone have any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia. Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring. Gallego.
Yes. The item passes eight to one. That concludes the liquor license portion of our agenda. We next move to ordinances, resolutions, new business and planning. Are we ready for that portion? Clerk.
We are. Motion to approve items 43 to 159, except the following. Item 56, 72, 73, 74, 75, 83, 90, 92, and 158. Item 146 is requested to be continued until October 2nd. 2019.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia. Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We next move to item 56, which is an item related to our convention center. If the vote passes, we will be installing two Momava nursing stations at the Phoenix Convention Center. This is an exciting opportunity to make our convention center a friendlier place for moms, whether you are nursing or using a breast pump. So, gone are the days when you have to try to find a bathroom stall with a power outlet. These pods are mobile and ADA accessible, and parents can download an app to find the closest one. So one more step towards making Phoenix the most family-friendly city in the nation. We just opened some of these pods at Phoenix Sky Harbor. With that, does anyone have any comments? Are we ready for a motion? Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, Mayor. I love this idea. I think it's a fantastic idea, and it's something that we should have done some time ago, but I'm glad you brought it forward as part of your agenda, too, of opening up and making sure that our city is accessible to everybody. The only thing that I'd like to, with staff, moving forward on this, is right now, this is a sole source. If we could find other types of competitors, or maybe ways of manufacturing it, or doing this, a way of maybe bringing down the cost in some of these, that'd be great. But I'm fully supportive of it, or I'm going to be voting yes on this. But moving forward, I'd like it to us to at least maybe take a look at other types of products that might fit the same type of, you know, get the same use out of it. And I think it's a great idea, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward. Really appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you. An exciting days for moms. Do we have a motion on item 56?
Second.
I think Councilwoman Stark made the motion, and Councilwoman Guardado, second. Wonderful. Although, roll call.
Doesn't matter.
Pastor.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Motion passes nine zero. Item 72.
Actually, I think, Mayor, if it's okay with Councilman DeCecio, we'll move 72, 73, and 74 together.
Yes, Mayor, that's.
Yes. So I move items 72, 73, and 74.
Wonderful. Councilman, do you have any comments?
I do. The reason I had these items pulled, I think it's important for the public to realize it's something we would have just voted on. But the reason I had it pulled is because I want people to understand the relationship we have with the tribal communities that we have in our state of Arizona. This is $10.6 million, right about $10.6 million, being invested in our communities, into a lot of the nonprofits, a lot of the programs, and people just don't even know this is going on. So I want to give special thanks to the Gila River Nation, who gave $9 million, the Abipai Nation for $310,000, and then the TO Nation for right around $1.2, $1.3 million. This is a great thing. It's a great relationship, especially when you start looking at what's been happening throughout the years. There's always this push to open up gaming into other communities. And the relationship we have with these tribal nations allows us to get this type of funding. And I want to make sure that the public understands that if we were to open things up, we would not be getting these types of fundings at all. It would open up a whole new Pandora's Box. But from our end of it, we're very appreciative. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. It truly is a great partnership. Will help us build safer, healthier, greener communities. Any additional council member comments?
I did. One second.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Some great news for our communities. Item number 75 is the Maricopa County Community College District Strengthening Working Families Grant.
Actually, Mayor, I might move items 75 and 83 together. One member has a conflict.
Sure.
Unless, okay.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? And noting that Councilwoman Pastor will not be participating in the vote. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia. Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Item passes eight zero. Our next item is item 90, Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Grant. Councilmember Garcia, do you have any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the Phoenix Police for looking at grants that create this collaboration, that provide safety for the residents that are experiencing mental illness, and just encouraging police to go after more of these grants and these type of partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve item 90.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this is an exciting grant that will help us get our officers' mental health first aid and crisis intervention team training, part of our effort to build the strongest department possible. Any additional comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor. Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Item passes nine zero. Item 92 is Aviation Department Photography Services.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor. Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes. Item passes eight one. Next on our agenda is a planning and zoning matter, item 158. Southeast corner of 99th Avenue and Camelback Road. We will welcome our planning director, Ellen Stevenson, for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll just read the short background paragraph. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, if the council wishes to go through that. But real quickly, this is a request for a planning hearing officer stipulation modification for a project that is located approximately 293 feet south in the southeast corner of 99th Avenue and Camelback Road. In this case, the applicant requested to modify stipulations from a zoning case that was done in 2007 regarding general conformance to a site plan and elevations, as well as administrative approval of site plan elevations for a C2 high-rise parcel and some retail pads, and stipulations regarding street improvements within adjacent to the development, and deletion of a pedestrian circulation plan, and a couple of other stipulation modifications. The Maryville Village Planning Committee was scheduled to hear this case on July 10th, but due to lack of quorum, did not hear it. The planning hearing officer heard this case on July 17th, 2019, and recommended denial as filed, and approval with modifications and an additional stipulation. Staff does recommend approval per the memo from myself dated August 26th, 2019, and adoption of the related ordinance. That additional, that memo includes additional stipulation from Councilwoman Guardado's office, asking for a public hearing review for future phases of development regarding the site plan and elevations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone have, on the council, have any questions or comments? With that, I will open the public hearing. We do not have any cards from members of the public wishing to speak, so I will close the public hearing. This item is in District 5. Councilwoman, do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the item.
With the adopted.
With the adopted ordinance.
Ordinance.
Excellent. The councilwoman has made a motion to approve the item per the August 26th memo from the Planning and Development Director, and adopt the related ordinance. Roll call.
DeCecio. Garcia. Guardado.
Yes.
Nowakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Item passes nine oh. Thank you, Councilwoman. District 5 has been busy. We next move to the public comment portion of our meeting. The public has a few minutes to address the council on any topic of interest. Council members cannot respond to non-agendized items. Michael Fernandez is our first member of the public. And if Mr. Fernandez could come to the podium to address the council. I do not see Mr. Fernandez. We will move to Elizabeth Venable, followed by Lorenzo, Lorenzo M. Stontmeyer? Thank you. Wonderful.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Venable, 1950 East Corret Street, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020. Born and raised. I am here to say that you guys are still not in compliance with Martin v. City of Boise, even though sort of the stated version is that you don't criminalize homelessness, you only criminalize camping or trespassing, which in the state is the same thing as criminalizing sleeping, because you are de facto criminalizing sleep, and because many of these charges are arrests on public property. And they specifically say that in the arrest. Not just in the arrest, but in the ordinance. They say that you are arresting people for both camping and for trespassing on public property for sleeping. And so that's unacceptable to me. But then also, there's another ruling, which I think might be something the city might be interested in working on, that would be actually a beneficial solution, that might be sort of a best practice, which came out of Martin, no, Levon v. City of Los Angeles, which is that when the police take the possessions of people who are experiencing homelessness, they cannot throw them away, as is current practice around central Arizona Shelter Services, where the police go through and take people's stuff from their hands. You need to store it for 90 days and have them have access to it. Now, this would provide a beneficial service, too, because it would mean that CAS wouldn't have to do any of this. No one would blame CAS for them throwing away their documents within three days. within three days, you know, things like that, and it would allow for long-term storage and more dignity for people experiencing homelessness, who should not have to give up all their possessions simply because they might be stored in something that's unsightly or is considered a nuisance. So, um, I would consider that to be something that might be feasible for the City of Phoenix to work on in combination with what I have heard you guys are doing, which is, um, working with the Andre House to possibly implement new shelter space, which would be great, um, if and when it comes, and, but it's still not going to meet the need, you know, it's still not going to meet the need, and when you get new shelters, more people come in. So, um, I think if you were to address either one of them through public policy, I would think addressing the issue of having people's stuff seized from their hands, like legit, I have heard stories of people's stuff being seized from their hands. This is unacceptable. We have a woman here who that happened to. Okay, that's my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Fernandez, followed by Lorenzo.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Fernandez. I live at fifty-two fourteen East Flower Street in Phoenix, Arizona, on the property where I was born and raised. Two years ago, SRJ Construction LLC began a total remodel on our family home. We had a parting of the ways, so to speak, because of shoddy work and inspection irregularities. SRJ, SRJ's work was not fully completed in accordance, uh, with the city-approved plans, most prominently being the roof, fire sprinkler system, and electrical plans. We were able to have the remodel completed to code, but we've been waiting to no avail for the fire inspector to give us a final approval for the sprinkler system. We had to have a new fire sprinkler contractor finish the system to code because the old contractor would not come back to finish. We don't know why, but for now, we'll reserve our suspicions. In the meantime, adding insult to injury, we received a letter from the City of Phoenix stating our building permit would expire in thirty days. The city planning and fire inspectors are well aware of our situation and are offering no reasonable assistance. We suspect their hands are tied. Here I stand before you today. Councilman DeCecio, you are the councilman for the district where our home is located and where SRJ does most of his business. Yes, I understand he may be having some business problems. However, the city's lack of concern to our plight is unnerving, to say the least. I wonder if other homeowners in the Phoenix are expecting, are experiencing problems with their builders or lack of assistance from the city planning and/or city fire inspectors. All we need is the city fire inspector to do a final inspection on our home, and the city planning inspector to give our home its final certificate of occupancy. Our biggest fear is our family is being caught up in some sort of bureaucratic nightmare that can leave us in limbo indefinitely. Our family would deeply appreciate if you, Councilman DeCecio, or maybe you, Mayor Gallego, could meet with me and my wife, the planning department, and fire inspectors to see if we can't bring this to a conclusion and let our family resume our lives. I'll leave my contact information with the city clerk or whoever is here that will take my information. Our family thanks you for your time and your help.
Before we leave, could you give me your address? We can look it up.
Yeah.
I, with your permission, I will share your card with Councilman DeCecio.
Yeah, I have actually, I have actually...
And I believe our planning director is here today, so maybe we can get moving even before the meeting is over.
Okay, I have copies of the, of the speech with my, all my information right here.
So I, I can meet with you right now with Allen.
Okay.
He's the head guy.
Okay.
That's man.
Okay, and my address for the record is fifty-two fourteen East Flower Street.
Okay, Flower.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll do it right now. How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll excuse Councilman DeCecio from, Lorenzo will be followed by April Jones.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Lorenzo Stautmeyer. I'm a advocate for the homeless. Second behind Ms. Elizabeth over there. She's awesome. She, uh, actually cares about people. But what I'm here for is the fact that I came to Mrs., uh, the mayor's, uh, office to, uh, talk to her about the hundred and sixty-eight people who died last summer because the police department is asking citizens not to give food and basic needs to the homeless personally, but to give them to organizations. These people died in, uh, transit, going to these places trying to get it. Twenty-two more people have died so far this year. I've been in your office at least six times. I've been threatened by the police officers. I've had, what's one specific officer's name is Cotton, he came to me and he said, "Listen, if you don't leave here, we're going to trespass you, and we're going to use our power, the power you just gave them, to go to Taros and other, uh, uh, community health organizations and get personal information about the homeless people so that they can di, uh, get a hold of their diagnosis, so they can use against them, and have them uh, put in, uh, straitjackets and took into UCC Hospital." These are the people who want to take a stand in their community. We're not going to stand for that anymore. Also, I tried to come to your office, and I've had one of your representatives come out in the hall, and she allowed the police department to listen to my personal and private conversations between her. She said that that, they do that on a regular basis. I, I don't believe her, because I remember being invited by you and your husband to come talk to you before you took this office, so I knew that your office was open to us. So when they said that to me, I didn't believe it, and then I, but my main concern today is that there is asbestos in the walls of the, of the library, and there is mold, and a high content, such a content that homeless people were dropping dead. One died and was resuscitated at the hospital. I have over a hundred and sixty-seven, uh, cases filed against the police department. Just came from the Attorney General's Office two months ago, filing police corruption charges against the Phoenix Police Department, and all the evidence is, is there. All I did was come in and ask your office to go and get it. They said, "No." I went to the Attorney General's Office. You know what they told me? "Why don't you get it?" So, what we're going to do is, is we're going to make an attempt today, me asking you for a appointment, so you will be filled in on everything. So we have everything. It's all black and white. All we need you to do is just act on it, if that's possible. Also went up to the city manager's office, same thing. They allowed the police to come in and sit in on a personal, private conversation with me. They said they do it on a regular basis. Couldn't believe it. I said, "I know the mayor is not going to allow this to happen because I'm viewing it as, as, as being racist," or I, I don't know what category to put it in, but I know one thing, it's evil. And all these people that I let know that they're over there, the kids and the older people are breathing in asbestos and mold. Your office said, they went over there and they looked around and they said they didn't see any. It's impossible, because I did the, the history of this, of this town, of this state. There's mold everywhere. They told me they didn't see or tested for no mold at all. Thank you.
Thank you. April Jones, followed by Diane Barker.
Madam Mayor, I would, um, ask that, uh, Michelle and Jerry go before I do, if that's okay.
That, that is fine. All right, Diane Barker will be followed by Jerry.
I'm back. Um, in April, several parents and community members organized, came here and shared perspective, and asked the city for assistance in promoting equitable and inclusive practices in our city. We appreciate that Mayor Kate and our council members are committed to building a city that works for everyone. City employees, Daring Adventures, and myself, all developed the first-ever inclusion program for South Phoenix Levine residents, providing my son David and other individuals impacted by disabilities with the opportunity to build relationships in their own community. Just as magical as getting to watch my son participate in these activities, was watching these participants and their interactions as it transformed mindsets. Our program was uniquely designed to not just create an accessible and adaptive recreation program. Our long-term goals has and will continue to be to focus on our commitment to creating an inclusive and accessible city. Inclusion influences our motivation to work together as one, and after last night's votes, it shows how effective that method can be. Effective inclusion practices can provide a necessary layer of protection and support to some of our city's most vulnerable populations. Its reach is not limited to those with special needs. Its reach can equip all residents to embrace all impacted by diversity, including our LGBT communities, immigrants, African-Americans, and those living in poverty, just to name a few. Providing us all with the knowledge and a platform, and the unity to overcome labels that have oppressed us, is what it will take to move this city forward. It's my belief that promoting inclusion throughout our city will lay a foundation for transformation in Phoenix. It will empower our community to proactively seek ways to create and to maintain safe spaces for all individuals to come as they are. Spaces several unique populations that collectively do make up the majority of our city have long deserted. Our summer program focused on educating our participants, providing them with knowledge and tools to understand and embrace diversity that makes Phoenix the great treasure it is. Our program offered everyone a seat at the table, and together we had difficult conversations and discussed how to overcome the issues impacting our city. We concurrently taught them how to adapt leisure activities so that they could be inclusive to all. It was an honor to be part of the beginning phase of building a diverse community that's inclusive to all. Thank you for being a village committed to restoring balance and hope for families like mine. It's enabling us to bu, build a support network necessary to ensure that all children in our city are provided with the same opportunities to succeed as their neighbors and friends. I would hate to see the end of this, as we're just beginning to build momentum. I would urge you to consider a continued investment in programs and services inclusive to all tax-paying residents throughout our city and throughout the year, but I want to tell you thank you, and it makes me proud to be a City of Phoenix resident.
Thank you. Diane Barker.
Good af, good afternoon, Mayor Kate and City Council Diane Barker. I'm in District Seven. And we took a turn in September of twenty fifteen, when the ex-mayor Stanton said, "This'll be the last meeting we have like this," and we're here now, after, with the full body, and thank you. I appreciate it. One thing, though, and I know you want to see the meetings run smooth, I believe, that, Mayor, um, I just heard, picked up on a comment that you said earlier that you couldn't respond to non-agend items. In fact, that has a little bit of truth, but the over big thing in serving the public, no. The AG has determined that the City of Phoenix can respond on spot to criticism, can put this to staff, and can put the item on the next agenda so that you can discuss it freely and make an action to it. And I'd really like to see the city have that publicized as it has in the past, so the people will know that they can get their issues heard, and, um, we want to solve problems. Sometimes when we write to you, we get an automatic, um, email reply, and it kind of silence some people when it says it's going to the newspaper can see that. Um, the thing about it is, is that we need to handle these problems timely, so I ask you for that. And the other thing is, you did pass the sidewalk easement on seventy-seven East Polk. That's my neighborhood. I'm in District Seven. And, um, I'm just saying that when all the developers are building these towers, make sure, this is a sidewalk easement, that there is enough shade. We really need that, and we need that on any expansion of light rail. It does not hit the mark. I use transit, and many times it's not shady there, and I burn my hand in trying to get water. So those kind of things, the system hasn't picked up, even though the public has said this over and over. The same old model from light rail needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I have some handouts here for the, uh, councilmembers and the mayor. Well, my name is Jerry Kettlehead, and I'm the executive director for Daring Adventures, and I am, um, we are, Daring Adventures is the Adaptive Inclusive Recreation Program as a partner with the city, and I just want to be here once again to say thank you, thank you, thank you, um, for allowing us to participate in the program in Levine this last July. Uh, I think it was very successful. Um, a lot of, uh, positive things happened, and I think with Michelle, you know, standing up here today, and just the impact that it had on her and her family was just remarkable. Um, a big aha moment for me, I think, attending these sessions, it wasn't just about, uh, an individual with a disability, it was really about total inclusion, you know, with, with everybody, and really understanding what that means, and the importance of having total inclusion. So that was very, um, meaningful to me. Uh, we were able to take many of the community members from Levine up to Camp Colley, and we had a fantastic time up there. Uh, you know, to get out of this heat, uh, it was just fantastic all the way around, and it's always wonderful to visit, uh, that property of the City of Phoenix. Uh, the handout that you're getting today is some photos of inclusion that we do throughout the city, you know, whether it's our, uh, Phoenix Summit Challenge, um, we participated and assisted with the Fourth of July event, uh, for, um, at Indian Steel Park, of having an inclusive program there and many different activities. So I just wanted to stand here today to say thank you so much for being our partners and, uh, making this stuff happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, April.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. And, uh, thank you, chair members as, uh, sorry, councilmembers as well. My name is April Jones. Um, I am Vice President and Secretary of the Board of Daring Adventures. I've been with them since two thousand and thirteen. I was recruited by Ann Wheat, who, um, basically developed this program when she was working for the Parks Department. I would like to say thank you for all your support for the city and the Parks Department over the years. Um, we've had quite a great relationship. As Jerry mentioned, we do quite a few things partnering with the city. This, uh, last year, we served twenty-two hundred individuals, um, with just two staff members. We have certainly lots of volunteers. Um, people love going hiking with us. Um, Jerry mentioned that, uh, a couple of weeks, he'll be at the North Rim of the Grand Canyon with a group up there. Uh, just wonderful things that we're doing, um, with inclusivity and providing adaptive recreation for people with disabilities of all kinds. We're reaching a tipping point, and we are very excited about, um, bringing inclusivity, especially to the City of Phoenix. So we plan to be scheduling meetings with, uh, each of the councilmembers coming up soon, so we can talk with you about our ideas and our plans, and, um, get your feedback, and so that you can learn a little bit more about us. So we'd appreciate you, um, carving out a little time in your schedules when, when we make that call. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Daring Adventures, and again, to thank you all for the support that you've given us over the years, and, uh, we look forward to a continued successful partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Donnell.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good af, good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Ronnie Donnell. Uh, I'm here along with Michelle, just wanting to come and thank you for your support, uh, with the summer program for these children. Um, the, by allowing us to do this, you really did help a lot of lives this summer, and without your support, these kids, you know, they didn't have a lot going on, and this was awesome to see them interact with each other. Um, the company I own, We Care Corporation, we made a small donation to kind of seed this, and we would like to just see it continue on throughout the school year. So with your support, uh, we just wanted to say thank you, and then just ask that, if any way possible, the councilmembers, the mayor's office could see this going forward in the future, because it is a wonderful program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia is one of the councilmembers representing the Levine area. Councilmember.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you all for your efforts. I think I wasn't able to make it, but I saw the pictures and the social media postings. It was great, and, and particularly Michelle, I know you're a public servant, the Rosebud School District, and, and to watch you be an amazing parent, and then carry on and support other folks, and, and make sure Phoenix is an inclusive place. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Alicia is our final comment for today's meeting.
Okay. Hello, my name's Alicia.
Hello, my name's Alicia, and I'm with the Homeless Project with Elizabeth, still sitting here, and I kind of got with her during the time of going through my houselessness. I won't say homeless, I'll say houseless. But I had my things taken from, I live here in Phoenix, but I had my things removed from where I was on private property from an officer. And later on, they came back through there, and I was able to watch someone else's things, my birth certificates, paperwork, all kinds of things, new items. And I just can't believe that they threw them in a dumpster. I just think that maybe they took them in, sorted through them, and got what they wanted, and went on. But again, I was going to start the Homeless Life Matters, and I wasn't able to do it because of this, because of all these things that they say that is legal, which is not, because I have the paperwork here, which is the Ninth Circuit. So I've read it, I went through it, we've all discussed it, we've had meetings, and so I'm just here today just to say, where's our things? I mean, you know, we just kind of lost everything, and when you lose your, your items that you have somewhere on a private property, and then you have to go through, what, you lost everything? So I'm just, I'm just here today because I lost my things. Didn't lose them, they were taken. So, and I just think that the, the way that they talk to people, like, you're already out there, you're already homeless, or houseless, or whatever, and they still disrespect you, they don't have, they don't care how old you are, they don't care. And it, it could be either one of your family members, maybe, you don't know, never know. So I'm just here today just to say, if something can be did about it, or, I don't know what could be done, because people are dying, this is a crisis. This is just not something that you can look over. This is a crisis here today. And taking people's birth certificates and paperwork, now I have to start over, now I have to go through this, then I have to run around and do all these things, and, and that's just holding me back from even trying to move on. So homeless life does matter, and I appreciate Elizabeth, you know, from her even coming talking to me, because you don't find people like that. You don't find people that just help you when you're in a time of need. So we're, we're all gathering, and we're, you know, we're just, just coming here today to just ask that it be stopped, because they're still talking crazy to people, they're, they're disrespectful, and they're still taking people's things, and I don't think that they should do it. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mayor?
Councilmember.
Can we ask staff to just talk to her and find out what she believes was taken, and then find out some dates and some other things like that, so we can trace back what it was? And if birth certificates or things were taken, that's virtually impossible to get. It's really hard. And then if it turns out that we did take something, which I'm not saying we did, I don't know, but if we did, then we have an obligation to help her get those things back somehow. At least get her on a path to find a way to get those things back. That's a big deal if it is, if it was. I don't know, ma'am, I'm just letting you know. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Wonderful. With that, we are adjourned.